I don't think so. What are we on, Richard?
I'd like to call the Town of Victor's only Board of Appeals meeting to order. Today is September 20th, 2021, 7:00 PM. I'd just like to start with questions.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Next, I would like to declare Donna Morley necessarily absent. Excellent announcement. Hopefully, everyone can see the emergency exits on the side and in the back. If you haven't done already, please sign in. There's some business cards at the back with some email and phone numbers for the planning department. Please turn off your cell phones on vibrate. That would be very helpful. And if conversations are taking place, please take them out in the hallway so as not to disturb the meeting. As far as the meeting goes itself, I think we've gone through this before, but just to make it clear, when the applicant comes forward and makes their presentation, the board, I think, will do their very best not to interrupt. Questions, comments, please don't interrupt the board, so it's just for the record. Appreciate that, not talking over each other, so this way when the minutes are typed up, she knows who said what and when. That's... And it's September 7th, 2021. I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'm over to approve.
Do you want to hear on?
Oh, I read them. Oh, that's right. I can approve. Even though I read them.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sir, all in favor? Aye. Right of state. Very good. Thank you for your presentation. All right. Chris? Have someone else with you? Good.
So...
Hold on a second. Let's get back to our station. Back. All right, so last time, this would be September 7th, if we made some progress. Basically, there's four pieces to your application. The last is that existing freestanding sign, presumably that your variance or variances are granted, that that freestanding sign is...
That is correct, yes.
...to be a condition to cover variances.
Yep.
At that piece. I think we were on the same page, the board. When necessary, but generally, it appeared that the sign code requires 35 feet. As of the situation, the layout, 28 feet seem to be reasonable and seem to be going in that direction for approval. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep.
So our stumbling block, I think, was the issue of the tenants' names, the two tenants. Either you get a plaza name or the building name. We're just going to pick the plaza name or building name and ties into the first piece of the board. Trusting a 24.5 square foot monument sign where the code requires 20.
Correct. That's where we left off, yes.
I think the board was going in the direction of, why would you need a larger sign if only really going to have the plaza name more than?
Well, I did some research since we last spoke, and I went out and visited the site. And I did see a couple of signs. In fact, one was right next door to our building and another one was adjacent to our building. And there are businesses, multiple businesses named on the sign. I did some research on the type of businesses these are, and none of them are retail businesses. They're either manufacturers, suppliers, something of either industrial or manufacturing. That's really what a lot of them are. And I can show you some pictures. I took some pictures for you to take a look at.
Okay, so what you have showed me, there are two colored photographs. Two colored photographs. One is the 7910 Ray Boulevard with a sign. Consider monument sign Franklin Energy Services and Clear Cove and Champion Windows. And another photograph, monument style sign 760 Canning Parkway with Washer Solutions Design Associates and New Path Learning. I think what we'll do is, on the back, I'm going to... These are for the board?
Yep, you can have, absolutely.
So I'm going to mark them as exhibit one and exhibit two. So give us a second. I'm going to pass them down for everyone to take a look at. While they're looking. Al, are you familiar with those two signs?
Yes, I am.
Do they need variances?
I believe they already have variances.
Okay. Wouldn't happen to know when?
Somewhere in the past.
Somewhere in the past. Okay, that clears it right up.
If I had to guess, somewhere in the last three to five years.
Okay.
They've been in front of us in the last three to five years?
Correct.
All right. I've been here longer than three to five years. I think Matt has. And those two are not ringing a bell with me on why we do that or why... I believe you, you know, we're looking at this and now saying that there was a variance for both of them, but without looking at the rationale, just because it's there doesn't necessarily mean it would go to for bad. But these are helpful. Your client, I'm looking at these two photographs, still would like both Bristol Instruments and Dealer X.
Yes, primarily because obviously we need to upgrade the sign. But the big driving force behind it is the request from both tenants to have their names out there. So it's kind of a twofold approach, update the sign, but also accommodate our tenant, both of our tenants.
And without, unless, Al, you know, either one of these, the square footage of them, you know, if it's larger than what the code requires?
I do not know. It looked to be about 20 square feet, which is allowed, or less.
Any thoughts on if you know if they're larger than 20 square feet?
It was tough to tell, and I didn't have any measurement tools with me when I went to look at it. I wanted to at least just get a lay of the land when I went out.
I think it depends how you measure as well.
I'm sorry?
They've got sculpted tops, so your normal process is to draw a rectangle around it. And I would suggest that puts them over.
That's correct.
Is it, can we pull one of the variances quick? Is that a monumental? Is that okay? Is it something?
Yeah, I think that's worth a look. Instead of saying, you know, can you come back the next time? I'd like to pin this down for you and see what the board's thought process was.
There's another sign within sight of their place at 793 that's got two names of companies on it, and the building has three occupants. So I wouldn't be surprised if they wanted to go with three sometime. And as I was coming home down Main Street Fishers, I went by two places that each had two.
Yeah, it was probably, I don't know, Al, is it 10 years ago when that, or maybe more, when the sign language changed to... When the sign code, I should say, changed from being able to list all the tenants to really just trying to have a monument sign to establish the building?
About 14 years ago, when it changed the code.
There's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming types of signs up.
Well, one of them is non-conforming is one went through here over on Anthony Drive. There's half a dozen tenants on that side. Right-hand side going out.
All right, while we're waiting for those variances, you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, the signs that were on Canning Parkway weren't bold or irritating to me. And the building is somewhat confusing about who would be in there. I sort of can understand why the tenants would want those. It doesn't draw customers because you can't see it from 251 or Phillips Road. You have to be on that road, and it's just a matter, in fact, you can't read the signs until you get close to them. That's my observations.
Right, and I think with the, what we discussed before, the intent of the code was if it was retail, retail style, someone coming to the facility would need to know, all right, this is where X business is. Otherwise, it would be called whatever business building. And then you'd go on or into the building itself, looking at the marquee. And you can then Bristol Instruments, a delivery here or delivery there. Hopefully, your tenants' employees know where they're going. It's for the individuals who are looking for it.
I think when we were designing it, we're thinking about, they're obviously businesses. So all businesses have a certain amount of traffic. It's been less, obviously, during COVID. But we're trying to, the aesthetic we tried to develop was a sympathetic aesthetic to the general landscape of that area, plus the style of the building. So it's a very simple monument design. It's not trying to be aggressive in any way. It's just really an identification, a wayfinding tool, really, for somebody trying to visit any one of those two businesses.
What's the maximum amount of tenants you think you potentially could have in that building?
Well, it's a 40,000 square foot building, so depending on the type of use, I mean, it's more of an industrial manufacturing type.
Right. I ask that because it... What I believe the intent of the code is, is that it's not to have a monument sign out street side with 15, 20 different kinds of, you know, these are the tenants here, and now it just creates chaos out there.
I don't think that's ever going to happen. That's, that won't hap-
Is it fully occupied today?
Right now, it is, yes, between these two tenants. It's more or less half and half right now. The building is half and half.
If this board were to grant the variances, do you consider having a limit of just the two tenants' names on them?
I don't want to say with 100% certainty without talking to the owner. But I mean, I don't, I can't make decisions for the owner, but I can certainly express that.
I'm exploring the need. I think the board is exploring the need for, need for two. And trying to, anytime a variance is granted, or in this case, multiple variances are granted, is to do it, limit it as much as possible without, basically giving the benefit as much as for the applicant as possible.
You could say that the neighborhood already has three. I didn't see any more than three.
Without knowing what the board or why the board granted those variances, it's difficult. And it could be there was a rationale behind it. I hope there's a rationale behind it.
My, yeah, we'll know hopefully momentarily. My guess is, and at least my logic, as I kind of look at this, it's, obviously, the code's intent wasn't to end up with a directory of five or 10 businesses that make it confusing when people drive by. It's really not in the, we call it retail corridor of Victor where that is a bit of an issue. So kind of very similar to our other codes that we run into, like the, you know, you can't put a shed forward to the front of the property or things like that, that mostly apply to subdivisions where homes are all in line. You know, when you're in a rural setting, we kind of look at that and we kind of weigh the criteria against what the, what the community was really trying to, to get out of that particular code and say, you know, that really wasn't meant to necessarily cover. I can only think that that's probably what the logic was for those other signs, like, okay, look, this isn't, this isn't 96. You're, there's not 10 retail businesses listed. We're trying to prevent, like, point people driving by and trying to read a directory of 12 or 10 different businesses and also kind of cluttering up the view. The question I have, though, is if you could pick one, size or distance, which one would you prefer? Because both, to me, might be pushing it.
Can I answer it from a design perspective?
Sure, sure.
So when we were working on this design, we weren't generally planned text height related to vehicles traveling by. So they're going to be driving around 30 miles an hour maximum, I would have thought, on that road. It's not a busy, it's a business road, isn't it? It's not a pass-through. So we looked at the scale of the lettering that we put onto the sign, and we came up with this, these sizes. Although it's not shown on the drawing itself, it's, we worked out on the basis of like a 30 mile an hour pass-through, somebody driving. It's almost inevitably going to be in a vehicle of some sort, either a car or a truck or a van, trying to find them. So we developed the size related, that was the decision-making process related to the size. I did have one thought that...
The size at what, the size at what distance? The distance requested?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, you work on a sort of rationale of about 30 feet. Say, you know, if it was six inch text, you could maximal legible, if it was static, if you were static and looking at it, it's about 200 feet. But you could read it, so that, these are slightly smaller than six inches. So if you're driving a car, that's your sort of decision-making distance from 100 yards away coming closer to the, you're looking for the business or you're looking for the number. So that was really the background to it.
Barry, you have any questions?
No, I think I'm still, based on the comments I made at the last meeting, I'm still fine with the location, the proposed location. The number of businesses listed on the sign, even as proven tonight, it does seem to match the character of the neighborhood. That I, my opinion on that still hasn't changed. And I'm still not in favor of making the sign bigger. I think that you can still achieve what you need to by meeting code. But those are my...
Hey, that's helpful. Al?
760 Canning Parkway, my mistake, was prior to the present code. 7910, 7910 Ray Boulevard was granted a variance a little longer ago than I thought, 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Look, can I ask what the variance they went for?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me, please, for the record. So 760 Canning Parkway, exhibit two, predated the current code?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful. And 7910 Ray Boulevard, to your question, I see my name is on it.
Well, it must be right then.
Must have an accent that.
I don't see your name on it.
Thank God. I couldn't remember that for- Very few days I've missed. That was wonderful. Interesting.
Okay, so the justification seems to have been, and now it is ringing a bell here. It could allows a sign on the building itself. And in this particular case, the applicant had presented, it says, well, if we put a sign on the building and you're driving along the road, you can't see the sign on the building. So it was a need to identify the building itself.
They forgot, so there's no sign on the building? Is that what was the trade? The sign for the signage on the building?
I don't know that. I don't think I can tell for me. Al, can you get both a monument sign and a sign on the building?
Yes, you can.
All right. So then the question, or either one of you two or both, if you put a sign on that building, can you see it from the street?
The main entrance is at right angles to the street, so...
You have a sign on the building. There are signs on the building, right? I thought last time when you, there were pictures showing the building, there were signs.
There was a sign that was up front. That came down.
I recall seeing a sign on the building.
No, I don't believe you can.
I think you have to drive around to the door entrance to see anything.
Yeah, the main entrance is turned away from, the main facade of the business is turned 90 degrees to the road. And there's quite a bit of landscaping, so it's set back quite a bit, if I remember.
In fact, I thought if you leave the sign where it is, there's a tree in front of it, and if you move it where you want to, there'd be another tree in front of it. You can't see it better with the new location.
I see a compass direction on the, this monument sign location operating on IDS ID sign systems. So I don't know what you're referring to, as far as where the main entrance is.
I think the main entrance, if you, if you look, here's the road. I think we're looking at the same plan, just got a smaller version.
Yep, okay.
So there's the road, and the main entrance is on the, as you're looking at it, the left-hand side.
North is up to sheet.
Yeah, I believe north is up, yeah.
North is up to sheet.
Yes, that's correct. North is at the top.
And it's adjacent property to the east, east that already has a tree, tree banger.
So with the, on the interior of the building, it says one-story commercial building. So what you're telling me is the entrance, if I look to that first line, one-story commercial, if I go to the left, that's the approximate location of...
Correct.
Is that where the sign is?
No.
On the building?
No, I believe the sign, when it was there, was on the southern facade facing the street.
All right, and are you telling me then that if the sign was there, that you could not see it from the street?
I think it, again, I think this is memory.
There's not, there's a lot of landscaping in that building and...
Okay, yep, that's helpful. All right, so Matt is showing me Google Maps, street view. And I can see a number of larger deciduous and even some pine trees that probably would, good luck having any kind of sign up there and seeing it. Okay, so I think that's, that's helpful.
So, Al, are they allowed to have a sign there now? If they wanted to, could they put a sign on?
Yes.
So maybe it's a similar case where we, can you trade a bit of a, what's unique about this is similar to what was unique about?
Right, so the justification, this, we're looking at battle development. And the variance was dated August 8th, 2013. The justification, as far as changing the character of the neighborhood, typography of the land makes it difficult for those that are going to go to that building to be able to see the building mounted sign. There are currently several other directory signs within the industrial park of similar nature. And the rest of it is basically the same, but it's the difficulty of being able to see a sign.
I think those are true.
Okay, so that was 7910 Ray Boulevard.
And I believe in this case, the sign met code. I don't think, I don't see one for...
Oh, for the size?
The size.
All right, so thank you, Sarah, for walking through the, each of those variances. I think while Matt's looking at the 2013 variance. Fred, do you have any thoughts on the size of monument sign? Asking for 24 and a half square feet, and the code allows 20 square feet?
Well, it's kind of my opinion that they could stay within the code on that. Four and a half square feet, you can find room for some, some letters. Go to 20. In fact, I don't think the other signs are any bigger than 20. They didn't look very big. You ever measure one of the other ones or get any sense of the sign?
I didn't. When I went to take some pictures, I didn't have measurement tools to do that.
Well, it didn't look very big to me.
The sign is exactly 20 square feet, 60 inches by four, so five by.
What Matt's referring to-
Five by four. Is the Ray Boulevard, 7910 Ray Boulevard sign.
And that's doing about the same job.
All right, I'm, I'm in the same camp as Fred and Sarah on the size of the sign, as well as the distance to the road and the two tenants.
You are okay with the closer distance or?
No, I am. Everything that Sarah had walked through.
Okay.
And it made sense, and it's just because of the, the location and the, I guess the curve of the road makes it difficult.
At 35 feet, the sign is almost out of place.
Right, right. So 28 feet from the pavement edge makes sense.
Can I interject with an idea, two ideas? So if you are comfortable with the placement, would you accept if I moved the design from the straightforward monument and moved it more to a post and an upper panel and reduced that panel down to 20 square feet, but still maintain the height? So a car driver can actually see the sign? So we, basically, I'm saying we could, we could change the design and actually reveal, like, cut away the, we'll take 4.58 square feet off the sign sign.
Similar to how they're doing?
Just like that, so it becomes-
That's how they did it too.
Yeah.
So I'm sure what Matt was referring to is exhibit two.
Yeah.
To that style of sign. So Al, measuring, as far as the code reads, it's measured the- It's measured the same way, correct, on, on the, um, what the code allows? Oh, there we go. All right, so.
How they measured it. They don't cover the area here, so it's literally the.
Okay. So I think the answer is yes.
So yes, the sign area would be measured the same. I'm just reminding the applicant that this board had determined many years ago that in order to be a monument sign, it has to be within one foot of grade.
Okay, so basically, if we raised the sign one foot from the ground, it becomes a post and panel sign, not a monument sign, correct?
You'd raise it more than one foot, yes.
Yeah, so thirteen inches, yeah. Which would be good for snow clearance anyway, that sort of thing, so.
It's no longer a monument sign if it's more than a foot off the ground?
More than a foot off the ground, it's no longer a monument sign.
But the only thing that are allowed is a monument sign?
Correct. Well, if you would like a post or freestanding sign, so to speak, you'd have to go to the planning board for that review.
I think he's saying if you keep it to twelve or less, it's.
A monument sign.
Monument sign.
Sure. But so.
Above that is, yeah, it's another meeting or two.
Oh, okay. So the other option then would be to shorten the sign. Um, just narrow it so that I get by two point, by the four point five square feet. And then it would fall into code as a monument sign.
I, I'm just, I don't want to be a designer here, but I'm just looking at the other signs and they're forty-eight by sixty. And yours is forty-two by eighty-four.
Sure.
And to me, it looks like on the sides, there's probably plenty of room to shave a little bit here or there, to really get you there and not really have to change much with the, with the lettering. With the lettering, obviously, the, um, the, the height, it's a little lower than the others, which, which is fine. It's a monument sign. Uh, the other ones actually are twenty-four inches off the, off grade, at least according to the drawing that I'm looking at.
So the, the concern that I have is, um, the procedure and notice issue.
Okay.
What has been advertised for the applicant here is variance for the monument sign.
Right.
Are you suggesting, and I'm not saying you can't.
No.
But if you go to a post-design.
Yeah.
This has to be renoticed again.
Yeah, which we don't want to do, so.
Right, that's, it's going to delay it.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean you can't. It's just, it's going to cause a delay for you.
I think it's causing the tenants some distress that they haven't got a sign.
That's right, sure.
So, um, I, I would suggest therefore we'll redesign the sign slightly to pull it into the twenty-square-foot variance requirement. Or these, the base requirement and then, but keep it as a monument sign.
All right, so if your design is going to comply with the code, the twenty square feet.
Correct.
And you don't need a variance for that.
Okay, so we can proceed.
Right? Are we on the same page with that?
Well, it, it sounds to me that the board feels that it's, it wants the, I'm listening to the board, so. The board, I, I'm listening to, and you seem to be suggesting you, you're comfortable with twenty square feet, so.
Because that's what the code requires, so I will tell you, you have two choices here. We can decide on that piece of the variance, the requesting twenty-four and a half square feet.
Right.
Where the code requires, allows twenty. And I think you're inviting, uh, the board denying that piece of the variance. It's choice one. I don't know. I can't speak for the board, but it sounds like that's the direction it's going. The other choice I think you have is withdraw that piece of the variance. And that way then you, you're, you can reapply, you can do something different, because you're, once the board decides, there are, uh, legal ramifications to it.
Sure.
As opposed to withdrawing it and you have some different choices.
Okay.
You, you two or your owner has to decide which way you want to go. Is that a fair analysis? Everyone agree? Al, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Want to think about that? You want to discuss that a little bit?
You're the president and the owner. I'm just, here is the design support.
I mean. I think, uh, if I go back to the owner, just tell him, we're gonna proceed with the design, but we're gonna shave size of it down to meet code. I don't know that it's gonna make much of a, of a big deal, but again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the owner, but I, I, my, my inclination would be that he would be okay with it.
They won't even know.
What's the, what's the time that they can reapply for a variance on the, uh, larger than twenty square feet? If they withdraw today. And they, uh, apply for a variance on that issue in thirty days or sooner?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Can the board grant a conditional, uh, uh, the variance conditionally that we redesign the square area to twenty square feet, but grant us the position and location?
All right.
So that's kind of where we're at, I think. I think we've all said. indicated that, hey, we're okay, we'd like you to stick with twenty square feet, however you, if you want to make it round or however you want to make it. But in, in, in lieu of that, it's, we're okay with you being closer to the road. That's just kind of like a one or the other. That's why I was asking earlier, would you rather have the sign bigger and farther away from the road or closer to the road and adhere to the code of the twenty square feet? I think Sarah had said the, the same thing and, um, the other two members as well.
You're basically saying you're okay with everything with the exception of the size of the sign. If we cut it down to the twenty square feet, everything else is.
So the, I guess the short answer is going to be, have to, but put it under motion and it sounds like the board's going to grant the section of variance allowing the sign to be twenty-eight feet from the paved edge. And two tenants' names of, um, I think we're not going to limit you to those.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, do we want it, so the other variance was maximum of three tenants. At the time they came in front of us, they had two. Do we want to be consistent and say maximum of three? Like we have before?
Some of they asked for though.
They'd ask for two.
They'd ask for two. So I'm, I'm always concerned that once it, it changes like that and there's more, not necessarily less, now it's potentially, it's a notice issue that we can get into a bind. So, um. Twenty-eight feet from the paved edge, two tenants, and a condition that you're going to, uh, remove the existing monument sign. And you're going to, it sounds like you want to withdraw the piece, um, the variance for twenty-four point five square feet on the sign.
I'd say yes.
We concur.
We concur. All right. And do you need anything? Do you want it, um, in writing or is there?
No, I was just going to ask. I, Al, was there, when the county, when in the Dropbox, was there county comments from the last meeting?
I can pull it up.
I hadn't made a decision last time I held it over. Check that out before. If not, I can go grab it.
It was at the last meeting?
I don't know.
I'm in, let's see.
In the Dropbox?
Yep, I'm in the Dropbox for the last meeting, last month's meeting. It's easy, the SEA.
Dropbox for this meeting.
Oh, hold on.
Yeah. It was after the last meeting.
Letter of intent, SEAF, is any of these familiar?
Be surprised.
Oh, here you go, here you go. County Planning Board referral form.
Be surprised to see anything.
Ah, that's just the form.
Oh, all right. I thought, didn't they, they didn't have a quorum?
They didn't have a quorum, and then she asked me if we had made a decision. Hadn't, so I just wanted to clear.
So that's, hang on, twenty-eight foot from this edge of the road, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's definitely.
Close letter.
This, uh.
It can go pretty fast.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's change the font size.
Signs are our weakest link.
What is?
Signs.
I don't say weakest link, they just.
Everybody wants their sign bigger.
That's easy.
I just wanted to make sure you have it.
Okay.
Okay, so from the county planning board, uh, class one return. Comments? Oh, uh, the board should grant minimum variance needed to provide adequate sign visibility.
That was totally high efficiency.
Okay. So I, I think what the county planning board is recommending is, I think, exactly what we're doing. Uh, you should be able to accomplish your needs, uh, with what the code permits for twenty square feet. Get it closer, get your two tenants conditioned, uh, take down the existing sign. Uh, questions, comments, concerns? Anything else you want to add? Fred, anything else you want to add?
Ah, I'm good.
Sarah?
I'm good.
Matt?
Nope, I'm good. I, I was, on the twenty-square-foot comment, we've, obviously can see others have done it with three names. So with the two, it allows you to be a little bigger in size, you know, lettering from, from others, and so I think, as well as being closer to the road, I think that's sufficient.
Okay, so, uh, let's walk through the criteria. First, an undecided change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting of the area variance. And to be clear, what we're looking at is the granting of the area variance for the sign being twenty-eight feet from the pavement edge and, uh, two tenants. The. One of the primary reasons is the applicant presented with us. Exhibit one, 7910 Ray Boulevard, and it seems to be similar to the needs for this applicant is the, um, difficulty of viewing a sign that would or could be on the building itself and being visible from the roadway. Allowing the monument sign with the two tennis names on it should allow for whoever's looking for the building to find it. Anyone like to add anything else to the first criteria? Second, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Much is the first criteria. Uh, the main problem here is the difficulty, uh, seeing, uh, what the code permits, a sign that is, would or could be on the building, uh, from the roadway. And the monument sign is going to allow whoever's looking for the building, both for the address and the names of the tenants. The requested area variance is not substantial. And as the first and second criteria, it's the difficulty being able to see sign that's, could be or would be on the building itself. Proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Uh, it's a monument sign. I'm not hearing or seeing anything that would create a problem with the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Unless difficulty is self-created, the condition is relevant to the decision of the board, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Uh, and so to be clear, for the record, uh, the applicant is going to withdraw the variance request for a twenty-five, twenty-four point five square foot monument. And the applicant is also, uh, agreeing to a condition for the existing freestanding sign to be, uh, dismantled, removed. How much time do you need for, from the time that your proposed sign is going to go up to the time the current sign comes down? Thirty days?
Sure.
Fine with everybody? Thirty days from the sign to go up? Okay, that'll be the condition, uh, for the existing sign to, uh, come down. Would anyone like to add anything else to the criteria or the conditions for the, uh, proposed variances? None? Motion for approval?
A motion?
Matt, second, anyone?
Oh, second.
Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Praise. Eric, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Right, all right. So next we have Tropical Smoothie Cafe. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for your patience.
Um, so we are, uh, requesting, uh, variance for the length of time which we could display our inflatable. We are.
Hold on, I, I need to interrupt you. Who are you?
Sorry, I'm RJ Wagner.
Okay, great. Go ahead, RJ.
Uh, we're requesting a variance for the amount of time which we can, uh, erect our, uh, inflatable, uh, smoothie cup. We're doing a, a grand opening, uh, here on October 12th. So we're requesting, um, between October 12th and October 26th to display the, uh, smoothie inflatable. Um, in order to draw public eye and, uh, you know, generate some excitement about the, uh, the new brand.
For two weeks, you want to have it up?
After that time, are you gonna have any intention of using that inflatable device?
Uh, not at the Victor location.
All right, well, it's only going to apply to the Victor location.
Yes.
All right.
So you only want two weeks, once?
Correct.
Sarah, have any questions?
Any questions for Al? Because that's a plaza. Is it ten times a year per business there?
Good question.
Doesn't seem to relate to any other business other than the one application when you read the code on that.
I would, considering most of the businesses are in plazas, I would say that it goes to whatever business it is that's requesting it.
Be pretty busy if they all.
presumably they're not all doing it all at once.
What are your hours of operation?
Uh, seven AM to nine PM.
I assume it's inflated the whole time, whether you're open, closed.
Yes.
How hard is that thing to inflate and deflate?
Um, not extremely difficult. Um, it's the, uh, the moving it that's more difficult. It's kind of heavy.
So deflating at the end of the day and then re-inflating it in the morning?
It's an option.
Look, I think it would look better inflated than deflated. I think we'd find very quickly it looked like a pile of plastic.
Some big thing died there.
Yeah, just my. I, I, the, I'm just looking at it is, so there's, you only want to do this once for ten days. Versus if the code allows you to do three consecutive days, ten times a year. And maybe to their point, is there an option to just go for three days? Wait a day? Go for three days, wait a day, go for three? I'm not trying to game the system when it says, okay, you can do three consecutive days 10 times a year.
Yeah, so we were kind of going off of that, so
You take a Sunday and you don't have it up, and then
Yeah, it seems like there's a, sort of a 30-day allowance per year, so we were just hoping to get half of that all at once.
So like, how'd you come to the conclusion that you needed two weeks? Instead of just a week or five days?
So generally, the, when opening a new restaurant, there's the the initial build, and then it kind of, you know, if you do a hard open where there's a lot of marketing, it'll come down. If you do a soft opening with no marketing, it'll build to a certain plateau. So the plateau begins to form after two weeks. So we want to get as much attention as we can for the first two weeks in order to generate a higher sales volume and a higher level of plateau for our continued sales.
Al, I take, you've seen the proposed location for this. Any concerns on traffic obstructions, visibility?
This is placed in that is it like in a food court or something? Or outdoor food court?
So it's, we're proposing to place the inflatable, the Mo's Southwest Grill, right next door. Our franchise group also owns, there's a patio that's out there. I believe there was a picture of the patio submitted.
See where it's hatched on the other drawing? No, right there. See where it's hatched?
That we would display the inflatable on the patio.
I believe that was approved at one time as an outdoor eating patio where the planning board had reviewed such things as safety and obstructing traffic, so placing this, I can't imagine, well, I don't imagine that it would affect anything differently.
My concern would be confusion. Because Mo's is on the corner, but this smoothie shop is around like the other side of the building. So now we're going to have traffic driving all the way around the building to find said smoothie shop. So that would be a concern that I would have, with it being the distance from the actual shop itself. It's not actually sitting out front of that shop.
Is that accurate?
Yes, that is. More of an adjacent location to the front of the building, or the front of the storefront.
This, I'm looking at it, I'm presuming it's one of your exhibits with, yeah, that.
I mean, I'm assuming the intent is to get your attention from 96, not from when you're up there.
Correct.
That, that is not an accurate distance from where the location of the retail store is going to be, or the Tropical Cafe in proximity to the inflatable.
That's correct.
How far is it going to be?
Yes, yeah, that's a, that's a picture of the current location.
They're going to be right here, right? You're going to be where the burger place used to be?
The Carrot Company.
Oh, so you're going to be right here?
Yes.
Sorry. You're going to be where this Carrot Company is. Actually, that's right, it is right next to it. I was thinking it was, I was thinking it was going where Smash Burger was.
So did I.
Yeah, so they're going to be right here. And it's going to be right here.
So this doesn't necessarily depict that.
So what Kim has given me, if you can see that photograph.
What's next?
So it looks like it's going to be within three parking spaces of the location, the storefront of where you're going to be.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding then, I'm sorry.
We're good, we're good. You see that Fred?
Yep. Yep. Close.
What are the dimensions of it?
It's approximately 12 feet tall and four feet wide.
Fred, do you have any questions?
No, it seems pretty pretty easy to approve to me. Just the title, the very nature of it. Thing is temporary anyway.
Matt?
I'm just happy to see someone actually opening a restaurant. And if you think it just takes an inflatable smoothie for 10 days to be successful, I'm on board. The question I have for the board is, is there any other mechanism? Because this is really a temporary one-and-done kind of thing, right? And we're going to put in a variance that really runs with, in perpetuity.
Right, that's what Al's comments here are, is I think we have the ability to create a sunset.
Okay.
And it's just for the two weeks, from October 12th to October 26th. Doesn't run with the land, it's over, it's done. Don't need it again.
Perfect for me.
Hopefully your
October 12th is solid, like that's your
That's our grand opening date.
And the end of Business Day on the 26th, it comes down.
Packed up, taken away.
Sarah, you okay with that?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Fred?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody on board that wants to speak for or against? Nope, thank you. Anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
Al, anything else you want to add? Hey. Run through the criteria. All right, an undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting of the area variance. One factor here is the location. And it's like the prior application, the difficulty of seeing the storefront Route 96 to begin with complicates it. So this is a one-time deal, it's for a grand opening for two weeks to run from October 12th, 2021, and ending October 26th, 2021, and at the end of the Business Day on the 26th, it's going to be taken down, packed up, and sent some other place. Anyone else want to, anything else to the first criteria? Second, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Similar to the first criteria. The location of the storefront, as well as for the limited purpose of a grand opening for two weeks seems to be reasonable for the objective of what the applicant is trying to pursue. Anyone like to add anything else to the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance is not substantial. And two weeks for grand opening to be taken down at the close of Business Day on October 26th. Proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. It's inflatable, it's going to be taken down at the October 26th. Unless difficulty is self-created, the condition is relevant to the decision of the board, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance. A condition granting is that this is a one-time deal, it is for the two weeks, two weeks only, it's not to run with the land, it is only to apply to this particular tenant applicant. Else, would you like to add anything else to the criteria or to the conditions? None? I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I make that motion.
Brad, a second. Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Good, good luck to you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Does this imply that I'm up to date on my calendar as here? I'm way behind already. Oh, okay.
Anything for us, we're good? Anyone? Al, anything we need to know, need, should know?
Nothing I can think of at the moment.
All right, good. We have one meeting in October. October 4th. Otherwise, we're good. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Have a great night. Thanks so much. Well done, everyone.